Not sure how to get into Mike's room, I guess we'll find out. Eventually, hopefully. Right. Back to exploring. Do we move faster in the overworld? It feels like I move a lot faster. So we explored the library, explored... Oh, we didn't actually go to the hospital, did we? No, we haven't explored much of the town, to be honest. "Chris, remember me? Sorry if I was too strict when I babysat you and Noel. Since then, Noel's always seemed so nervous around me. Until today, she even complimented my outfit. I wonder what changed." And she was muttering something like, "My secute?" Huh. Couldn't tell you what's going on with her. The Bees with the Toy March on, I remember using that as a kid while waiting for, uh... Well, appointments. It was, uh, it was, uh... Man's greatest achievement. "Chris, your mum was bragging about your piano playing." Ha! Almost thought you were serious for a sec. That's with that pissed off look. See, Chris isn't bad at playing piano. We're bad at playing piano, so... Hmm, back i- oh, little bit later. Um, back again. You come here a lot for someone who isn't sick. "That being said, your mother was concerned for your health." I wanna s- oh no, I guess Rudy wouldn't be in here, would he? It's a diagram showing a bunch of lines in a circle. Oh no, he isn't here. "Hey, Chris, why are you checking this sink?" That's what I'm asking, sweetheart. "Try something for tonight's hand-washing marathon, Chris." It's important. It's the Angel Dome Noel and Des made at Chris- uh, church, rather. Patient name: Rudolph Rudy Holiday. "Chris." Ha! That service was pretty long, wasn't it? You wanna talk about something? Sure, yeah. "Chris, why the hell did you bring your friend here?" I, uh, I don't know, man. Like, "Chris, why did you?" Ha ha! It's just so crazy, you gotta laugh. "That's right, festival tomorrow. Told Noel I'd go support her." Just gotta save up my strength, then I'll... I'll be busting out of here, baby. Hmm. I don't know. Hope you don't die... By the end of today. But I suppose this is going. "Your dad bought another bouquet again." Come on, man. You know you can't afford that, huh? It's a chair. Nothing in here. It's a regular sink. It's a clone of the other sink. Perhaps there was originally one tall sink that was cut in half to create both of them? Hmm, maybe. "It's a classic one-to-ten pale scale, using IC as a model. At zero pain, he's happy. At ten pain, he's happy and sweating." He looks inside the cupboard. A very small oblig- a very small obligatory piano is hiding inside. Alright, let's go. This is... Yeah, this is the police. What the hell? No cops, no speed limit. I can go as slow as I want. They, uh, nabbed the loop. I'm trying to direct traffic without Undying, but... Officer Undying? Sorry, no one has seen her since last night. She wasn't at any of her usual places either. It seems strange to worry, given that she's usually invincible. But this job just isn't the same without her smile. Shelter. The shelter? Right, Undying had been in charge of something about that. An important code or something. It was the only thing that ever made her nervous. I never saw it, though. I don't think it's even in the station. Interesting. So Undying knows what's in... The shelter allegedly, which is interest- uh, interesting bit of lore. "The police station is closed. Please don't do any big crimes right now." "I'm sure the public will oblige." Yesterday's police tape. Alright, let's go this way. Suck! No. Oh my god, guys, I wrote- I can't even drag it. So, uh, can we go into the store? "Sorry, kid, check the sign." It says "Open." Open. Yeah, we checked the sign, it says "Open." Oh, man. Thanks for checking that. That's wrong. Change a stupid sign! Alright, I'm on it. One change sign, coming up. Sands. I swear to god. "I don't see you changing your sign." Got it. Come back in a bit. Sands. I will come back in a bit. Can I ca- can I- can I go back here? No. "You hear nary a bone. No rattle, no trusal, no xylophone tickle." Let me see papyrus! Hmm. God damn it, one day. Knock, knock, knock. "Hey, human doesn't monster scare you? Look at that girl bite- bited you." Nah, Chris's got nothing to worry about. I mean, I can eat little rabbits. Bug! The door-knocking guy? No, this is his wife. "Please take a break from knocking today, thanks." Hi, Alphys. What are you doing, Suzie? You don't like Alphys? Alright. Don't worry, Suzie, I'll do it. I'll talk to her. "Chris, di- did I ever tell you about, um, you know, I sometimes put out milk? Uh, I mean, in the alleyway?" Uh, can I re-explain everything? Yeah, sure. Okay, well, first of all, there was this cat, Mimi, who, uh, there's no particular evidence that she's real, but... You know what? I think that's enough. Okay, okay. Uh, maybe you should go enjoy your weekend, Chris. You know, you're not supposed to give cat milk. Cat... Milk to cats, cuz they're lactose intolerant, Alphys. Um... Yeah, let's just leave that now. What the hell is happening here? Don't drag me into this, I'm just looking at milk. "Oh my god, Chrissy, do you like- want some of my free milk?" That's my free walk, you furry freak! Suzie, you drink the milk here? Like, don't be shy, it's my milk and I love sharing. I'll bury you in your goddamn milk pile. And we're just not gonna come on that ever again. No further explanation is needed. Alphys... Yeah. Okay, Alphys. You keep doing you. I'm gonna go this way. Hi Sands. Uh, safe point here. Then let's go into the... The diner. There's a frogger. "Ah, Chrissy, are you here to buy me a free lunch?" Like, that catgirl, good gator, she's obsessed with me. "This morning, we accidentally ordered the same special. We had to, like, ugh, share and like, talk and laugh? And then she had the nerve to like, uh, pay for it?" No way! Like, I want your hair charity, so I'm just sitting here waiting. You know, in case she comes by, so I can pay her. "By the way, is my makeup okay?" I mean, I need to look better than her, obviously. God, so obsessed with me! Yeah, I suppose. Uh, how long should I, uh, do this beforehand? Is it really... I mean, think of like, the good of society, right? Like, he was always oogling girls like me and stuff. Now I could be a good little boy and... Ooh a JPEG. See, everyone wins, especially us, cuz it's really funny. Well, I guess it won't hurt to, uh, if it makes him happy, too. What are you two- who are you talking about? "Rave reviews and autographs from various normal townsfolk." Hot chocolate, it's too warm to drink. "Here after church, hon, that's nostalgic. Let me guess, the usual special will be five dollars." "I have seven dollars." "Alright then, hon, you two sit wherever you like." The diner, huh? Haven't eaten here since your mum took me. "I'm plowing into my food with a runny nose." "I probably became every janitor's enemy after that." But, it's funny. Even though I was only making a mess, her face looked so... Happy. Just sitting there, smiling, watching me. Kinda like you're doing now. Jeez. "Chris, anyone tell you your family is a goddamn weird?" Here you go. "And here's a little something extra for your friend." Huh? If you need anything else, just holler. Alright, Chris. Don't hold anything back. Phew. Want the last bite of my sundae? Too slow, aw. What the hell? So, guess we should get going, huh? What are you doing? Breathing on the window? Uh... Draw something. Is that me? Ha, not bad, you know? Yeah, let me draw something. It's you? What do you think? Uh, I can't see it, but I'm sure it's great. Ha, what can I say? I'm an artist. Even got your ear in there. One of them. Whatever. Look, I made you talk! Suzie rules. Make Suzie drawing talk. What are you... I wouldn't say that! And the rain fell down and... Washed everything away. Ha! No. Uh... Sure, keep- keep writing stuff. Huh? Are you writing something? Ha, Chris. I can never tell when you're messing around. Well, let's get out of here. "You mind cleaning your place up a bit first, hon?" Uh, oh, uh, yeah, sure. God damn it, Suzie. There you go. Alright, let's go. "How was that? You want seconds? Well, the customer is always right." "I'm sure your mother would be mad if you ate so much without her." Also, I don't have five more dollars, so... Ribbit, there's a fly in my suit. That's good for you. "Notice anything different about me?" Ha! Um, you've got a big hat? Now that I think about it, I never noticed anything about you either. Thanks, man. "That guy took a fistful of butterflies from his pouch and put them in my bowl. It was nice of him, but I didn't ask." Well, you know, it's cuz you're a frog. "Grease me up, chief." I'd rather not. Respectfully. "Working here all just da-" Working here all day just makes me hungry with diner food. Guessing the new guy's letting me take a break." "Gagon, some mineral water, please, and hold the water." Gagon, 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 gagon. Come to think of it, did we hire a new guy? Um... No. Hmm, no you didn't. What the hell's going on here? "IC's Pizza, your number one spot for piping hot pizza, pizza." "IC's Pizza is closed for new signing here..." Yes. "Here at IC's Pizza, your family is going to love it." "Temporary pizza stand. Sign is closed for repairs, store." "You okay, burger pants?" "Little buddy, my date's about to start, and is it in the bag?" Any more? "Ten-dollar flowers, heart-shaped pizza, and my secret weapon." "The old duct-taped suit I made for prom." I thought he was just gonna say the old duct-tape, and I was like, hang on a minute. "Little buddy, it's a first date, you say? I'm overdoing it, you say?" "But Pizza Rina, I wanna show I'm serious, that I... I love her." And she may be a little late to our date, but, I mean... Look at these memes, a frog riding a bicycle. Jesus Christ. That is going back. She's breaking out the vintage like this. She's gonna be making out with me in her mind, little buddy. Whoops, another new text, sorry, little buddy, till later. "Little buddy, like, date's about to start, and is it in the bag?" Alright. Yeah, it'd be weird if you were here. God, that- what was that? That was the... That's a dat boy meme, isn't it? That is like... I think that was popular when this- chapter one of this game came out. "Sands, how are you up here?" "Hey, uh, don't mind me, just fixing up this grill. Wanna hot dog?" "Heck yeah." Isn't that a cattail? It's low-calorie stuff, so you won't feel gritty. Yeah, it's incredible, yeah. It's inedible. We call that zero calories, miss. "It's an upgraded grill. Now, in addition to cat food, it can also smell like dog food." Great. Hi, guys. There's some kinda scratching noise coming from inside. "You hear a hissing noise, investigate further?" Yeah. "Peering into the dark, it appears that the yellow circles in the window were just fresh doughnuts, and the hissing was the fryer." Ow. Of course. Why'd we expect anything less? Or more, rather. Uh, whatever I might to do, this boredom, this innuendo... Hmm, you must have the wrong house. Now run along and play, darling. Uh, offered to give you a TV. What? You wanna give me your TV? I don't understand, is this some kinda catch? Uh, it's scuffed, old, and the colors are kinda messed up, but it's, uh, really good. It's a really good TV. I see. Could you bring it on by? Huh? Yeah, of course. Wait a second. Oh my, it's a handsome little thing, isn't it? What's the brand? Uh, I don't know, but his name's Tenor. TV has a name? No, I mean, uh, yeah, but just like, a nickname. Like, Antenna? How cute. I'll take it. Really? Hell yeah, crispy fan of my home. Oh my, you two really love this TV, don't you? Well, don't worry. "I have the strange feeling Mr. Tenor and I are gonna get along famously." Cool, well, I'm putting it in your house now. Hmm. How does I even fit through the door? Tenor, you cad, what is this? "Scalacious music video." Oh my, I think it's like, just awkward, well, waking within me, okay. It's closed? No! Asgore fans are not eating well in Delta Rune. That Asgore guy, it's a shame he lost everything after he, you know... Now he has to sell flowers to make ends meet, but... What? He's your father? Sorry. Well, I hope for your sake he quits being so obsessed with that stuff. Asgore glow up in the la- loud half of this game, I'm calling it now. Alright, Chris, you handle the driving, I'll be the turret. You know, I'll be standing in back, throwing dirt and stuff. It's not very nice, Suzie. Hey, watch for the door at the back of the shop. Watch for the do- oh yeah, there is a door at the back of the- where is it, though? The back door is blocked, you can only see through the basement window. A corkboard is covered with tons of paper and documents litter the floor. Wait, what? Corkboard is covered with tons of paper and documents litter the floor. I don't know, there's something weird's going on in there. Sure there's nothing to worry about. French fry. What's- French fry, uh, and the freaking ground. Am I gonna eat it? No, it's a wo- it's old and brown. Don't make me repeat myself. Don't make me repeat myself. Okay, I- I won't. I won't make you repeat yourself. Isn't that like a... Something happens if you stand here long enough? Hey, Chris, watch this. Lake skip! That was terrible. Hmm. Can he try not to laugh, dumbass? Fine, we'll see how far you get at the lake next time. It seems like Chris is becoming more in control as the chapters go on. I wonder if they're, like... Breaking- is they're gonna break free at some point from our control? I'm just gonna see if Onion Sandrope here can stand here long enough. Doesn't seem like it, I've been standing here for about thirty seconds. Ah, you have to stand here for thirty-one seconds? Well... Very weird amount of time to stand there for, so I guess we're not gonna see it. Where have we been? That's our house. I think this is where we have to go. I don't think we have to go to our house, right? Probably seen everything, maybe? Think it might matter if we street-raced in a van? Well, maybe your tires need some air first, huh? Uh, yeah, she probably would. She would definitely mind. Oh, you're at home. "You can feel pres- pressure gradient from the absence of entertainment." No, Tenor is gone. There you two are. I hope you two have been... Where'd? Are your church closed? Uh, you know, we just kinda... Chris, Suzie is the guest. Make an excuse for her. Uh... Suzie ate the clothes. That's not helping, dumbass! "Chris, do not be a bad influence on Suzie." Try not to be. "Landline phone, but you already have a cellphone." "By the way, I'm leaving for fire practice in a little while." "If you need anything, just come by the church, okay, honey?" Yes, ma'am. Oh, we can come in now. "It's a covered holding pizza-themed deodorant." Ha! The apple-splining kid and their pizza stank brother. Ha, reminds me of when I flushed down a bath bomb and... Huh? Chris, you did that too? What? You did it at home, dumbass, do that at school! Thinking about good memories in front of the toilet. "The apple scent of shampoo seems to be lighter than normal." Hey, still no hard evidence I drank that. Why would you do that? There are bite marks around the screw cap. Look, I thought it was like a soda can. Why would you think that? Suzie, come on. Alright, enough lollygagging, let's go. Alright, we made it. Now where the hell's Noel? Don't know. Damn, I'm getting bored. Chris, got any snacks? That works, I guess. Does that flower? Suzie, Chris, hi! Sorry I'm late, just had to... Yeah? Uh, is that a- a rose? This? Oh, yeah, sorry. Oh shoot, did you want some? I can pick up the stem if you... No, it's fine, this way. Or what? Okay, whatever. I picked it up? No. I guess it's like, seven green pixels. Here's my house. Uh, sorry, it's not much, but... Yeah, it's not much. The hell, it's huge! I'm already getting lost just standing here. Oh, really? Then, uh, here, I'll show you around. Yeah, join your study group. We're studying? Oh yeah, of course we are. Can I interact with these? No. Massive house. God damn, it's like a mansion! Okay, doesn't look any of this interactable, so I'll just go. Welcome to my ho-ho-home. Chris, let's start searching. Uh, okay. Let's meet at the couch when you're done searching? Oh, you're not gonna- oh, you're gonna follow- oh, you are following me. Ah, what the heck is this? My mum collects them. Okay, now how do you turn it off? Uh, just hold down the button. Though, for some weird reason, turning it off takes power? So it takes forever on the low-battery ones? Ah ha! Possible Twilight trailer reference, I don't know. It's got up here. Um... Should we explore... Well, the sofa is... Yeah, so we'll- we'll do like a, you know... Chris is staying su- Chris is staying super intense, this room's gotta be here. Sorry Noel, but we gotta go in here. To the bathroom? Damn it, Chris! It's the bathroom door. The tree that would potentially fall down if you climbed it. Up here? My mum just collects harpies for some reason. When Chris was little, they'd take one of these, they'd pretend to rip out their heart and chase me. Hmm. Flick? Yep, it's locked, alright. Noel, you give it a shot. Uh, okay, why are we trying to open my parents' room? We're exploring, Noel, come on. Quiet. Hey, what's in here? Looks, uh, suspicious. Uh, sorry, guests aren't allowed in there. Cool, sound, uh, suspicious. It's just my sister's room, but... What's with the ninja shurikens? Suzie, that's a snowflake, come on. Ah ha, that's a snowflake, Suzie! We made them from paper in Toriel's class a long time ago. Uh, then, why are they metal? Oh! My mum had them bronzed. Right, as it is. "Noel's homework desk, you took a pencil out, have it." Flashery? Oh yeah. "Holiday pencil, one attack, festive candy cane pencil, do not eat." Well, it's worse than the cactus beetle, so... Noel's homework desk. Great hiding place, although it smells like detergent and deer. What are these little, uh, wings in here? Oh, uh, haha, those? I've had those since I was a little kid. They're from when I was the angel in the holiday pageant- Or pageant, rather. But I liked them so much, I just kept wearing them. "Those will drive personal angel wings inside, worn out and tired." What is with your sofa? It's a couch for watching the TV. Why is it so big? A big sofa? I guess back in the day, uh, Noel, Chris, Des and Azrael, maybe would sit on it. "Smells bad. Under it is a metal CD with a photo of Noel in dark makeup." Whoa, what the hell is this? Um, Caddy wanted a custom cover for our mixed CDs, so... It's cool, you should, uh, do this for more. Ah ha! You can get my mum to let me go grimdark. Kinda wanna see that picture, I think it'd be funny. She's not looking, Chris. Attack her computer for clues. Uh... Phew, there he goes for follow-point bullet there. Hey, what's that green dog puppy- puppet wallpaper? She's not looking, Chris. Ah ha, cat pretzels. Oh, no, pretzels. Pirates of Pretzels. Cat petters. The hell do you have this? Uh, excuse me, it's great, it's like a pet raising game, but there's this, uh, awesome bug that lets you get- lets you pet. I have a save file of like, seven headless cats, ah ha! Whoa, wait, can we see, uh, after our project? Alright, Chris, be quietly, we are ninjas right now. Okay, favorites. Paranormal, crime, paranormal. Aw, hell, the freaking skateboard game, hell yeah, woo! What are you two doing? Uh, nothing. "Upgrading your computer." "You set her browser homepage to the skateboard game." Hmm. A bit of trolling. Why is there so much bottled water in here? Uh, it's just convenient, you know? Wait, wait until she learns about the free water from the sink. I usually bring an icy bottle with me to school, too. Ah, because I've sworn I saw you using the bub- the bubbler after me before. Ah, yeah, must have been extra thirsty that day, phew! Age of Ruin, eh? There wouldn't be so many Santas with dead batteries if Chris hadn't glued the cases shut trying to starve them. Chris? What the hell are you doing? What is this? It's an empty gift box. 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 Uh, Chris, do you need to check all of these? I mean, what I made this room is kinda sus. Ha, oh my gosh! Especially that vent. Ah ha, nice reference, Suzie. Oh, po- Oh, Among Us is- that means Among Us is canon in the Delta Rune refer- uh, universe, and that also means that this game takes place sometime after 2018, presumably sometime after 2020, cuz that's when Among Us got really popular. Huh? Reference? I'll stop talking now. It's an empty gift box. This is certainly a lore revelation I did not know I wanted, I needed. Right. "It's a thermostat, the only option is cold." What the heck is this? Uh, it's a holiday treat catcher, you know? Anyone wanna tell me it's normal to- Anyone wanna tell me it's normal to have one? Nobody? I've never seen this in my life. This one was my dad's idea. God damn. Big kitchen. "The fridge is packed with festive foods, and a jar of pickles." Can I take the jar of pickles? No. The sink is sparkling clean. Anyone gonna say anything about the giant sword? I didn't even see that sword. I thought it was like some weird, like, I don't know, I just thought it was like a halo above the stove. Oh, it's just my mum's katana. Normal knives aren't enough for dad's fruitcake, for her. Used to chop ancient katana. In the cupboard are cutters for gingerbread monsters. No gingerbread humans. Tragic. Anything else? Big Christmas tree. It's a highly climbable looking tree. Can I climb it? Whoa, you play piano? Uh, no, we just kind of, I have one. Someone really plays it anymore. Will we Des play it, question mark? Chris, you wanna get on the piano? I'll give out controls so you can play it. See if there's anything else in here. Nope. Alright, let's get out of here. Anything in here? I mean, there's this thing in the middle, but... So, uh, is this snack tray? Why, why Noel, why does you... Why Noel, why did you slice the cheese into hearts? I don't remember if you keep the wooden stick things. Squishy sounding assortment of snacks. Okay, I think that's everything. Just make sure I can't interact with this here. Nah, it should yes everything. Start the study session? Yep. Okay, should we, uh, get started? Oh, uh, yeah, sure. Uh, so, what are your projects about? Oh, well, uh... Sorry, um, phone call, I'll just be a sec. Hi Birdly, what's up? Uh, huh? Sure. Of, of course I'm alone. Uh, sure, I bet I do look quite... Uh, sure, I bet I do look quite divine this fine evening. If it's about the notes, I already highlighted them for you, so... Wha- what? You want me to go on a date to the festival? With you? Hey, we should probably leave, Suzie. Uh, I mean, sure, I, I'd be glad to. Be your player two. She's not going to the festival, you dumbass. Suzie? You don't really wanna go with him, right? Some people aren't gonna get it till you scream "no". Did you forget that or something? Yeah, yeah, you're right. I shouldn't be afraid to tell Birdly how I really feel. Next time I, I should be honest, next time I should... I should shake his neck and scream at him! So, uh... I already threw my phone anyway. Chris, I'll keep her busy, you go look for clues. Will do. Don't worry, Noel's not finding her phone for a while. You make like a dog and find some clues, go. Oh, uh, Chris, it might take a while to, uh, find my phone. So, uh, you don't have to wait around here. You know, you could, uh, go in a different room? It's Noel's phone. You still hear a voice on the other end. Answer it? You still heard Birdly dissing talking himself. Our sweets? Oh, what the hell did I even say? The pessary center, the nightmare is become real. Suzie hunting Noel just to stop me from going with her. She's, she's gotten the hand raised for me. Oh heavens, the yikes, where's my Dragon Blazer's bath bag? But now that I think about it, she must be very lonely. A poor girl who no one showed... And Lucy tipsy tricks. Hello, are you sure there? My bad, I hate you, but I love you at the same time. Listen, it disgusts me to say this, but I just act obnoxious. I will let you be the breezy side of my wings. You, me, festival. Uh... Chris, you, you sound ill. He's stopping my sweet. Cartoon idiot is in a fort. Hmm, go ahead and show it, Chris. I am someone Noel and Suzie are falling like dominoes for. And you know what dominoes means, Chris? Your neck. That, that is probably the most threatening line I've ever heard in any video game. Chris, we gotta, um, we gotta get out of here. Screw this. I don't know if I'm gonna do that voiceover every time, because, uh... Eh, might be a bit much. But, uh... It's locked. Oh yeah, it's locked. Um... We could go into Des's room, yeah. It's a computer, the monitor is unplugged. Computer, monitor is unplugged. It's a shelf, in the front are all the holiday themed games and movies. And at the back are all the scary games you never got to play. It's Des's bed, underneath are army rations, guitar picks, paintball gear, ice skates, and a badly traced drawing of a dragon. It's Des's bed, underneath, yep, yep. Oversized walk-in closet. It's covered in band posters and some handmade posters for shows that may or may not have ever happened. Hmm, that's where they have references, but I don't see them. It's a CD player, underneath are tons of punk rock CDs and one steel sealed Scar CD. Or Scar CD, rather. It's a box of odds and ends, dig through. Um, sure. You dug through the box and found a couple of burnt lighters, rusted multi-tool knives, expired rations, walkie-talkies, loose binoculars, a pair of shoes fit for hooves, violent comic books, paintballs, a cracked hockey mask, frayed yarn and buttons. Your brothers were tamed out and old mint caps with unique leaves inside of them. Interesting. There's a lot, there is a lot. A violin, a flute, a microphone, they all look very expensive and very dented. Rollerblades. Rollerblades, wiffle? Wiffle. Wiffle bat? Looking at these things makes your head hurt. Huh. It's a red guitar. There's a code taped to the inside, it says "shelter". You leaned down to look inside the guitar. You began to read the numbers in the passcode, one, two... Two. Interesting, okay, so now we're playing as... Playing as the soul. Oh, we can... Hmm. Okay, I guess we'll see what's in here. Hmm. Can't see anything. Okay, what's up here? I just don't wanna accidentally, like, continue, I wanna see where everything... Leads. Hmm. That's where we came, left. Right down. Just more of the same. Chris, what are you doing? Suzie must not get guitar. Need soul. That soul, Chris, will. Suzie, guitar, code, stop. Police, sacrifice, next week. Church tonight. Chris, dark world, no soul, can't. Um... I think Chris just collapsed. I know that. Hmm. I don't know where I'm supposed to be going, I kinda wanna s- Oh, I can... Oh, I can probably switch back. Chris, I don't think I really wanna do that. Uh... Whoops. Exactly, this is why. Now where are we? Okay. Oh, we could probably... So, uh... Um, looks like it's just the two of us. Damn, oh, what about Chris here? Why do I wish Chris was here? What are we doing? We turned the power off? Do you hear something from the basement? Yeah, I guess not the severed hand. Is that a Blood Curdlers 2 reference or crushes? I don't like to think curdlers. Huh? Dude, you actually know it? Of course, it's like a super duper classic. One day, the Prankers breaks up with that hand. Then like, they hear music playing in the basement. And when they go down, it starts attacking them and stuff. Jesus, yeah, that was so freaky. You know, I never, like, saw the original, only two. Gosh, really? I have the box set, do you wanna watch? Dude, that would be awesome. Yeah, gosh, uh, I used to watch it, like, religiously. It'd be nice to have someone to watch it with again. Don't wanna interact with her. What about, uh, Caddy? Doesn't she like scary stuff? Um, well, she just takes it as those serious. Alright, sorry about that, I'm back now, I had to go do something. Uh, I did catch up on the dialogue though, I did, uh, look back at it. Very interesting. Can I, like, actually go up here? No, okay, it is blocked. I was wondering maybe I could go up here and see that, see like what they're doing. I guess we'll just... Dude, the lights. Did, like, the power go out? Uh, Chris? Why are you doing one of your stupid pranks? Let's go fix the breaker. Dude, they know. A bit of, what if I just sit here? Will they, like, come down? Hmm. Whoops, the tree. Uh, sorry, dad didn't clean the basement this year. Anyways, the break is down here somewhere. Uh, can I go left or right? Am I choosing who to put to control? You know what really made me afraid of basements? Like, the underground levels from Dragon Blazes. The music just repeats over and over again? Hell yeah, that was weird. You played it? Yeah, only two, as a kid. You seemed to only like, to play the two, just like... Got it from the lost in da- uh, got it from the lost and found. Even though it wasn't mine, haha. Damn, stole it. Suzie? I played it secretly, so I wouldn't get in trouble. Oh my gosh, same, I played two with my dad, but like... There was like, this evil out my parents didn't know about? I always played it secretly, so they wouldn't take it away. Dude, I think I did that by accident. You did the evil out by accident? Yeah, I like, I didn't know you could be nice? So I was just killing everything and getting, like, pissed? Why the hell is everyone mad? Pretty sure I'd do it the good way now, though, maybe. Gosh, I'd love to see you play it for real. Well, uh, if you got another copy? Just leave it in the lost and found, I guess? Maybe I will. I always forget you can move during dialogue, sometimes. They're gonna... So, uh, where the hell's the breaker? Oh, uh, that, right. I'm, uh, looking for that. Yeah, me too. I don't wanna, I, I just wanna see how long, how much, what they have to say, you know? Dude, what if it wasn't Chris? Huh? What if it was a severed hand? Moving around down here? And then suddenly it reached out and grabbed your hand? That's a good idea, Suzie. Hey! I would, uh, die, I guess? You'd just die? I think if it touched me, I'd just be dead. Like, before it even, like, attacked? No, I, I think I would just, um, die a shot. Seems easier. Well, uh, I guess I would, uh, have to protect you. What would, uh, you do, Suzie? Thumb wrestling. I wanna s- I just wanna see how much they have to talk about. Okay, where the hell's the breaker though? Right? If we keep talk taking so long? The severed hand is gonna touch us first. That's probably the key, that there's no more dialogue. Yeah? Alright, let's go. Ooh, scary. Oh my gosh, this just brushed against my leg. What the hell is that? It, it's an angel doll. It, it was goddamn moving! No. Okay, ready to kill. I got a cane, you... You're gonna be at the death of a cookie pan? No, no, I'm just gonna... Huh? Dude, you got guts. There's probably just, like, a mouse underneath it, right? It's nothing to be afraid of. Damn. Dude, wait, wait a sec. Huh? Something else followed us from the basement. Huh? What? The severed hand! Suzie, meanie. Got ya. Okay, what do we do? Throw it out? Um, let's think about it first. If it's a mouse, it could be as cute as a pet. Ha, alright. And if it's a severed hand? I'll keep it as my pet. Haha, wait, let me raise it too. Ha, sure, we'll raise it together. It's funny, I was so nervous earlier. I've never actually hung out with you, you know? But so far, it just kinda feels like I don't even know why I was nervous. Just feels like I already know you. Yeah, I- I, uh, feel the same. It's pretty cool, I guess. It's just strange, it just feels like- Feels like you're the same as in my dream. Uh, what was your dream about me like? Uh, oh, I, uh- I mean, uh, I think I have to- I have to go find, uh, my old hamster cage. Hey, wait, I wanna hear about your dream! Don't move a goddamn inch. I would never. I would never do such a thing. Um, I wanna see if I can go back. Oh no, I wanted to see if I could. I can go- I can go in there. But I wanna s- I wanted to see if I could go back in the vents, 'cause I wanna s- maybe it's all connected, maybe there's a secret, is the thing. Be quiet. Maybe, it's weird, 'cause I probably could've interacted with Chris, would that have triggered something different? Or would Chris, I don't know, now I- I hope I didn't miss anything too important. Can I run? No. Doesn't seem like I can go anywhere else though, so I guess we're gonna go in here. Okay, I guess we'll see what- try and see. Oh! Did you just hear that? It sounded like a guitar. Huh? It's probably just Chris, like the other stuff. Oh hell dude, it's gone, the angel fell over. Thing could be anywhere. It had to have been coming from- Uh, in here, but- Hey, let's go. Hmm, it's quiet. Yeah, well, it's probably scared of us. Suzie, touching that isn't- Let's just chill out, it's gonna come out, we'll hear it. Yeah, you're right, we'll know if it's- we'll know it's there if it makes noise. So, what happened next in your dream? Uh, so we were all riding on roller coasters? And you, Chris, and this boy was there? Oh, right, where I say, yeah. Chris's costume was kind of, I mean, was my coaster cool? Uh, yeah, it had like flames on it. Yeah. Honestly, the boy was strange though. Huh? Why? He looked- he looked a little like Azrael? You know, Chris's brother, but not. Yeah, I mean, he does kinda look like Chris's mom. Huh? From, uh, what you just said, he would. Right, it just makes me wonder why, and then I got so overwhelmed I stopped questioning it. I ended up- I ended up being in a large city with Chris. What was interesting is that Chris just- Chris just acted not like their normal self. They acted just like they do recently, I guess. Uh-huh, Chris seems normally- Chris- Chris seems normal recently to me. Only it was, I guess it was almost like a game or something. Encountering enemies, finding treasures, stuff like that. Huh? Never thought of it like that. And Chris, even though they kept looking at me, like they wanted to say something, everything that came out of their mouth sounded odd. Like it was like on speaker or something. Sounds like normal Chris to me. Well, it wasn't, something was weird. I think Chris is just weird, period. Yeah, sometimes they mumble, sometimes they yell. Sometimes it's like, dude, I don't know why, but like, for some reason, they're really, really good at flirting? Huh? What makes you say that, Suzie? Uh, never mind. I knew I shouldn't have flirted with the watercorps. Haven't you like seen them flirt with people? With who? Like, uh, enemies? What enemies? Dude, I don't know, I'm just thinking of like, like, damn. I should get- I should get flirting lessons from them. Oh, flirting lessons from Chris, haha, sounds fun. Uh, hi, you're also invited? Am I that bad? Uh, Suzie, I don't think Chris would teach me that. Damn. Guess it would just be the three of us then. Who's three? Oh, you know, uh, damn it, you know? Uh, so there's this boy that goes to, uh, another school, and I wanted him to come to the festival, but- You were thinking of going together? Yeah, but, you know, he can't go, 'cause of like other school stuff. Huh? I mean, don't get any weird ideas or anything. He just doesn't really get included much, so- What the heck? How pretty sweet are you, Suzie? So I noticed like, there's like this photo of you and Chris on the wall. Oh my gosh, that's so old, I forgot about it. I didn't know you were like, uh, close, I guess. We, I mean, we- we're just neighbors, so, I mean, we just ended up seeing each other a lot, that's all. Okay, but like in the photo, you're like, kinda like riding a Ferris wheel together? Haha, yeah, it's kinda just, you know, forced. So, running a Ferris wheel together doesn't mean anything? Uh, maybe not if it's like, just like a forced thing? Uh, I mean, yeah, obviously, I mean, it's just a stupid ride. So, if theoretically it was someone else, it wouldn't- I mean, maybe it's more about how the two people in the wheel feel? So, maybe even if it's forced then? Okay, cool, haha. So how did you feel back then? Well, Chris was quiet and staring out the window, and suddenly out of nowhere, they shook the whole thing. And I screamed, and then they turned to me and smiled. So is that good or bad? Uh, I don't remember, I was a kid. So, uh, anyway, let me ask one more thing. Uh, about your dream? Uh, sure. Was there any part with, uh, I mean, just the two of us and? Well, in my dream, you did have this cute tail. Huh? Uh, okay, well, um, sorry your dream was stupid and fake with that part. And what's wagging behind her? Let's shut up for a while. I t- I take it as my- my t- my- my turn to contro- uh, move. Sorry, I just wanna hear the dialogue. Chris, calm down. Ow. If it only pushes you back, eh, that's not too bad. Um, well, this is awkward. Wait a sec. Dude, stop making so much goddamn noise! You're supposed to be searching for clues, dumbass! Hey, uh, sorry about that, I- Suzie, that guitar, you- you're- Huh? Oh, uh, should I put it back? Uh, well. No, no, it's- I think you should play it. Me? Um, sure, sure, I can give it a shot. Let's, uh, just go somewhere else though. Um, okay. Suzie, guitar. I'll be right there. Oh, really? Hmm. Whoops. Never sized ball in closet, yep. Hey, just so you know, me and Chris were in a band, so don't be surprised if I'm pretty good. Whoops. Sure, you wanna hear this? Huh? Yeah, of course, I- I just always like listening to someone play. Huh, okay, and check this out. Dude, I actually kinda kicked ass with that one. Can we get an encore? Just for my fans. Shut up, that was the remix. Man, today's been awesome. Not to be weird or anything. Uh, it's not weird at all. I'd really like to hang out with you too, Suzie. Sweet, maybe we could like, I don't know, hang out again tomorrow or something? Uh, unless you're busy? Uh, no, I'm not busy, it's just tomorrow is, well, it's the festival, Suzie. Oh, yeah, I- Would you- Would you wanna go together? I- The lights? Oh yes, someone had turned them off. Asgore. Um, hello, Mr. Dreamer. I don't mean to intru- interrupt your schoolwork, but- Is that a snack tray? Uh, yes, feel free to have some. Don't mind if I do. You, cleaning sure does work up an appetite. Figured I'd get in a fight before your mother's home. Oh, well, uh, there's no rush, you know? She has work, she's not gonna be home for hours. What do you mean? I just saw her outside the window. Mum- mum is- Sizzy, I- Sizzy, I'm sorry, I- I think you should- Hello, Carol. Mum, I- you- Get your hands off that guitar. Hey, what's your- She- she didn't know, mum. I was the one who gave her the guitar. I- I told her to play it, I just- I just wanted to hear it again, and- and she's not a bad person, I'm like- Noel. Kitchen, now. Hey, listen, Noel didn't do anything wrong. It's my fault, I took the guitar and leave. What? You are not welcome, leave. Don't talk to my daughter again. Hey, I can- Suzie, just- just go. Well, I guess he's taking your daughter to the festival tomorrow, jerk. Uh, I'll be in the kitchen. Asgore. You're gonna eat the snack tray, do it outside. Yes, Carol. What the hell is Asgore even doing here? Okay, um- That- that was a sequence of events. Uh, what do we do now? I- I guess we just leave, right? Suzie's probably waiting outside. Probably can't go into the- actually, wait. Oh, I was gonna see if I could go into the vents maybe and s- see what Noel was talking about. I imagine we can't just go in, yeah. Uh, I guess we'll leave. Hi. You felt something ice on your shoulder. My apologies about just now, Chris. As you know, you are welcome here anytime. Well, that was awkward. What the hell was up with her, mum? Everything was going great until she stepped in, then the room dropped like five degrees. The code, Chris, we forgot about the code. Damn, it's all her fault. There then. Don't worry too hard about things, Carol is lovely once you get to know her. Uh, yeah, I bet. So what are you two up to now? Uh, we were probably gonna go out to Chris's house. Ah, see, I almost where the high is. May I offer evil of you two a cheesed cracker? You know what? Sure. Delicious, aren't they, Chris? Yeah, actually, thanks. Ta-ta for now, have a great day, Chris. Whoops. Did you need something, Chris? Are you okay? Oh, better than ever. It's the festival tomorrow. I'm expecting record sales for my flowers. With a bit of extra cash, I'll be back on my feet. Ready to serve my own snack platter for you and Azzy. There might even be some leftovers for your mother. Ah, yes, Carol and I have been working together. She's been funding my flower store, and in exchange, you know, it's funny, gardening was always my hobby, never my job, so selling what I grow has been tough. Flowers are for people you love. Giving them away just seems natural, doesn't it? Have a good- have a good one, Chris. Um, yeah, sh- she's out of here. Hey, hey, Chris. I didn't wanna say it near your dad, but I saw it. I saw it in the guitar. There was code for the shelter. Didn't get to write it down, but damn it, you're so close to something. Guess we just gotta try again tomorrow. Well, what the hell do we do now? Great, now it's raining. Lest your house i- at least your house is closed, let's go.